Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, December 12, 2005. This evening, City Council will meet in two committee meetings and then go into a special session. The first committee is Planning and Development, then Transportation. The Chair of the Planning and Development Committee is Member Jim Sands. Jim?
Mr. President, our agenda tonight has one item on it, to discuss an ordinance granting a revocable license for the development of the retirement community proposed for Stimson We've discussed this revocable language and the language. I think this draft is from November. And there are two sections. The first section authorizes the mayor to execute and deliver a revocable license agreement, license agreement, which will allow National Church Residences to construct and operate on this right-of-way and other property leased from Ohio University. Section two says that the licensee, Ohio University successors and assigns, shall agree that the City of Athens is maintaining the rights to install, repair, replace utility lines within the licensed area and may not be responsible for damages as a result of this. And finally, section three is the part that this revocable license that contains language that ties it to the lease between the university and National Church Residences to operate a retirement community on this site. The language says, "This revocable license shall be personal in nature to Ohio University and its successors and assigns, and will be in effect with the licensee having quiet enjoyment of the property, as long as the licensed property is leased to National Church Residences or an affiliate controlled by National Church Residences, its mortgagees, successors and assigns, and there is no change of use of the property from a planned unit development for senior citizens age 55 or more, or a continuing care retirement community." The Planning Commission sent to us a recommendation with regards to the Morris Avenue right-of-way, which runs from the end of developed Morris Avenue to the river through this piece of property. The Planning Commission recommended that we give this right-of-way to Ohio University so that National Church Residences could use it for their development. Or secondarily, if we didn't like that idea, they recommended that we give them a revocable license. After discussing this for quite a while, council felt that we would add a restriction to the revocable license, which is just what we said, that the effect of the license would be restricted to the developer, National Church Residences, or anybody who may come after them that continues to run this site as a retirement community or a continuing care retirement community, whichever they choose to do. But if it should change usage in 40 years, or 15 years, or whenever, and Ohio University or somebody else wanted to come along and change it to a dormitory, or a motel, or anything, the City Council at that time would have a chance to review those plans and come to some agreement with regards to the parking. Because our development ordinance for this site includes a very large variance for parking. 300 and some spaces are required according to our code. The developers are proposing 251, I believe. So it's almost a 50 percent parking variance, and we're very concerned about that being used for some other, more heavily trafficked use than a retirement center. So some members of council have spent some time talking to the developers about the idea that in the past, the city has traded rights-of-way for some other piece of property or consideration. And although we are not actually giving this right-of-way away, we are giving away the use of it for quite a long time. And so what might we expect from this? And I think the conversation was regarding the proposed cottages on the east side of the large ditch. The developers have reiterated their plans to develop those cottages, and I think that's part of their plan, so that's they intend to go ahead with that. During discussions with them, I -- they have provided us information that there is a small piece of land at the eastern end, maybe I'm not sure what the directions are, of this piece of property, amounting to about a third of an acre, which would be contiguous with the large piece of land that the city has behind the library, that could be utilized to develop some recreational area, open space area, whatever. And they have indeed agreed via a letter that we all have copies of, that they would provide this land and up to $35,000 to develop such a recreation area. It's my feeling at this point that this is their last best offer, that negotiations from this point on would not actually gain us much more in participation with this area. And so I'm proposing that we put this ordinance on our agenda for the special session tonight to be read for the first time in our regular session of three readings. And that's kind of my background. Council members? Paul?
I notice a reference to Exhibit A, there's no Exhibit A attached.
That's probably -- I made copies of this, I'm sorry. I will get you that.
And if I understand correctly, we only have two more sessions, council, don't we?
We have this one and one more.
Okay.
And most likely, a special session to deal with other issues, which would probably include this. We might as well discuss it. A complicating factor is the complaint that was lodged with the Ethics Commission regarding some conflicts of interest that have -- that might come into this for several members of council. And until we receive a decision on that, we, council members and the Law Director, are not exactly sure how to proceed toward a vote with this. So my recommendation here is that we read this, and next week, read both ordinances, have them for second reading, and when and if we get that information from the Ethics Commission, then we can proceed with the vote, if that's at all possible. So I don't know how this is going to come out, Paul. A lot of things are up in the air at this point. Nancy?
As one of the nitpickers, I would like to call your attention to the map that we -- that I passed out last week. You know, sort of the way I try to teach my students to look at development sites. And I guess what I would like to suggest, Jim, is that the first best and last best offer, probably for me, aren't good enough, unless I have some assurances that wherever the cottages are, and you can see that the cottages are, or whatever they are, would -- could be repositioned, and we don't have final plans. But I'm concerned about the setbacks. If you've walked over that area, and I would encourage you all to do it, if they built on the lot line, which we don't know if they will or won't, it could be very, very close to that bicycle path access road. And nobody can promise anything right now, so I was thinking this may be a bit premature. I thought we were hanging on to this as a way to assure that our interests were protected, because the Law Director said they didn't have to go on simultaneously. And so I guess, you know, as the person who went out and sort of got, I mean, this was in the original -- first we were told, oh, well, this is all OU's land, but then come to find out, it was in the original plat, as was Mill Street. We paid to have that survey done, so now it's ours. And then we also were told, well, you didn't use it, and then I got the air photos and proved we did use it, in fact. And so, you know, I feel like I have a little bit of an investment in this, and I think that I'd like to see a little bit bigger return than one acre of what seems to be pretty prime real estate than in exchange for one-third of an acre which can't even be used. And, you know, I don't really think we're going to exchange it, but I'd like some way to guarantee that our open space there, and I don't, I never heard the neighbors, as Debbie and I talked to them, trying to reconcile the differences, that there were any, there was any interest in Taunt Lot. I mean, I've seen, what I've seen used of that area a lot would be the ultimate frisbee team from OU and other uses. So therefore, I guess I would like to, I would have liked to have this kind of come later, because the land swap will not be, I mean, the land lease will not be acted on until April. Then once they started working on it, then they'd have to pay some attention to our area over there, our setbacks, you know, because we normally have 30 feet backyard, but in this case, since it's a pud, anything's the limit. You can practically build on the lot line. And we have no guarantees. And so I guess I'm a little concerned about that. And I remain concerned, just because I feel our, if we don't look out for our interests, who will? I mean, our joint interests, and it seems to me that there is an interest in trying to make the neighborhood as happy as it can be, and yet have the project go forward. You know, I guess if I were the developer, and I actually have learned to like Jared quite a bit, and some of the other people, you know, as developers go, they're very interesting to talk to, they've got a lot of good ideas. I think they could design it in such a way that they wouldn't have to put it on the lot line, but there's no pressure on them now, if we do this. So, I mean, or close to the lot line. And we don't have plans, remember?
We don't have plans. The plans will be required before they go to development.
If we have a --
Before they go to, before they go to building. Our development ordinance has, at this point, 18 conditions that must be met and satisfied before they begin building. And one of those conditions is actually one of two amendments that were offered last week, as a surprise to me, I didn't know they were coming. But one of them is a, says, "NCR, National Church Residences, will form a neighborhood advisory committee prior to the development of final plans, to include residents of the near east side area, not to include residents of the NCR planned unit development, and the advisory committee shall be in existence for as long as NCR manages the proposed retirement center." This advisory committee, I assume, will talk about how they want to develop this recreational area. Kevin Swartzoff simply mentioned some ideas that he had. He would be involved, obviously, if it was a recreational area for the city, and those issues could be discussed. As well as, we have, if I remember correctly, amended the PUD regulations that say if there is a setback, then they need to follow it, that the developer does. And although this particular application precedes that amendment, I too, I think that representatives of the developers understand our concerns, the administration who will be monitoring this understands our concerns, the advisory committee will certainly be looking for as many issues to increase the setbacks as possible. We don't have any guarantees, probably, at this point, with that particular issue.
Well, let me go back and say, the right-of-way that we have is a key and integral part of Phase Two. And I guess that, I mean, that certainly is a hammer that we could use and say, you know, make sure you give us the proper setback. And I'm not sure, as I've talked to the people on the east side, and everybody gets all exorcized about these differences, but I think they were talking about green space, and that, you know, it didn't have to be recreation, didn't have to be developed, a place to do pickup, to fly kites, and things like that. So I guess I kind of wish we could reconsider. I was too late to actually have any input on putting this up, but I do feel that it wouldn't pose any major limitation, because they'll just know that they have to please us. The alternative is, of course, everybody will say, "Why did you vote to have those buildings be so close to that bike path entrance, which is heavily used?" And why, you know, you can look out the window of the library and see, I mean, they'll practically be right in the side yard of the library development. And, you know, I think there are a lot of people who haven't really gone down that path and don't know the, how close this could literally be to those developments that many people on the east side, and even those of us who aren't, price. And so, and of course, I can, everybody can say, "Well, council let me do it." And we're letting them do it, I guess, if we pass this. And it's not going to be a hardship to the people involved, that I see. You know, the people who are, who are, I mean, they'll get their, they'll get their parking ordinance, they'll get their bedrooms, so, I mean, they'll have what they want. It's more of a design thing, and I think they're talented enough designers that they could solve the problem. But I'm not sure, I mean, the easy way out might be to take the existing approach.
Well, I would also assume that as talented designers and operators of residential areas, they'd want to keep their residents happy and wouldn't, would want them setback from ultimate frisbee fields as far as possible, also.
Perhaps.
Dale, did you have something to say?
Not right now.
No? Okay. Anybody else? Carol?
To me, it is appropriate that these go parallel. I'm, somehow, to me, it does not make sense to kind of hold up a portion of it so that it has to continue in the same ilk that we've been through for quite a while. I feel that the developers have shown some goodwill in accepting the concept of the revocable license, as opposed to, please, give us the land. And also, have shown themselves to be very cooperative in discussing the open space and agreeing to try to do many things that make the neighbors of this property more comfortable. And I feel like if people really want all of those conditions to go with the ordinances, we need to have a supermajority and make it work to everyone's advantage.
Paul?
I'm not sure, we should have them at the same time. Again, I think we still do need leverage, as far as I understand this, we're going, it's going to go into negotiation with the administration. And, you know, the administration is part-time, we're part-time, and we're not going to lose on any type of negotiation at this point. I don't see the advisory committee having any capability of having leverage if they don't get what they want, the neighborhood advisory committee, except being bad neighbors, I guess. You know, we don't, still don't have a plan of where everything lies, anyway. This thing has still been running backwards, from my point of view. And I've seen the goodwill of various developers all the time. That's why I'm up here, because 10 years ago, University Commons was there, which is a great place if you want to murder somebody, right?
I'm not sure. Comments from the audience? Chris?
I'm Chris Paul, live on Motown. I'm wondering about the mechanics of how exactly a revocable license would work in future, for future administrations. If NCR goes out of business and the land use is proposed to change, or changes, does that automatically, the revocable license automatically stops, and basically, the buildings that are built on the right-of-way are now trespassing? Or is it assumed that the revocable licenses still in effect unless the council of that time changes things? Do you see how those two things are very different?
Yeah.
And I think that what people were concerned about is that, that, you know, there's an issue about the fact that there's going to be buildings on it, council is going to be under pressure at the time to say, "Well, whatever," in terms of my son, he's always saying that. But there needs to be teeth in it, because there is this huge issue of parking, and if that land use changes, and if there is a change, it's probably because something goes out of business and there's going to be a push to change it, there's going to be a huge problem. So it needs to have teeth in it that says, "It evaporates. You need to go and renegotiate." And I'd like, and that's the only way to protect, because of the large parking variance that's going with the PUD ordinance, that's the only way to protect the neighborhood that's under a huge amount of pressure from parking and traffic as it is now. So it needs to have teeth, it needs to have teeth spelled out in it, that it just evaporates, and it has to be renegotiated. So I think that's the only way that you protect the neighborhood.
And that is the intent. And actually, this revocable license will be filed, there is language in the ordinance that these, the plans, the building plans will be filed with the county auditor, along with a license, a copy of this revocable license, so that if ever a change were made, a change of ownership, a change of plans, it would be flagged that way, as well as in the city, and indeed, the revocable license goes away. It is in effect, the language says it is in effect as long as there is no change in the use of the property.
The problem is, is that there's buildings built on it. I think there has to be even more of a penalty if they don't go, because, I mean, this happens in this town all the time. Something is said, "Yes, we will follow through on it." Developer says, "Yes, we will follow through." They don't, and it just kind of slides by the way. Unless citizens have a recourse, I mean, I guess citizens could say, "Council, you're not going and doing your job, therefore, we'll take you to court." But it has to be a put, some kind of penalty, or something has to be put upon the owner of those buildings, be it, you know, NCR spin-off, Ohio University, that says, "If you change land use, from the point where you change land use, if you do not have a, you know, if you have not renegotiated that revocable license, you will be fined, you know, however money, dollars a day." Because I can see the situation where it would just kind of go on, and then the land use would go into effect, and council would say, "Well, we can't do anything, people are living in it." So you see, the teeth is not there. I mean, the idea behind it is appropriate, but the teeth are not there. And in the future, we have seen projects go in this town, come and go. I mean, it's not guaranteed that anything in this town is going to function for 10 years, let alone 40 years.
It's not guaranteed in life that things --
Right. And so it needs to have teeth. Otherwise, count, we're assuming a lot of a future council, and we're not giving them very much, we're not giving them very good tools to work with. You know, either if the revocable license doesn't disappear, then the parking variance should disappear, if the land use changes. Maybe they need to be coupled in some way. So, because, you know, I can see, you know, OU just, it's most of their buildings, you know, it's their land, if something happens, they're potentially going, they could potentially inherit all those buildings, and then they would just say, "Well, you know, we're using it, we'll only use it for the next 10 years," you know, so, you know, it needs to have teeth. Otherwise, future councils are going to spit on our graves, and just curse us, because it's teethless right now.
Thank you. Other members of the audience?
If I could go over a couple of things, and I have some very quick prepared remarks, I want to make sure I don't miss anything. But at the last meeting, I did bring up some information, didn't have a chance to show it to you, but again, it's not, it's nothing that you haven't already seen, to some extent. But the first diagram, I'll leave it up front so the audience can see it again, just shows the site and the buildings as they're proposed for Phase One and Phase Two. Of course, here's a cottage, here's the parcel of land we're talking about. In my comments, I'll make mention that, I wish we did own all this property, but we don't, and of course, OU owns all the rest. But in an effort to try to get as much land, I believe it's, if you take both parcels, which is this little area that the city owns also, you get up to .44 acres, it is a small parcel. And if there was some way to do more, we would love to do it. But that's just, shows in color, a little bit of the process. And then a second board that I'll leave up here in front, was in conjunction with Mr. Sorskoff, was just what each of the park areas might look like based on the parcels, whether it would be simply the parcel that Ohio University owns, or would include the small parcel that the city owns, which would be a larger area here. So I'll just leave this up front. If I could make a couple of comments, I appreciate it. First, I want to reiterate our interest in not only being good neighbors, but good citizens in the Athens community. With 66 properties in 24 Ohio counties, there's a rich heritage of NCR presence in two dozen communities across the state. The German Village Association, which vigorously opposed our transitional homeless housing project in Columbus, appeared to present an almost insurmountable challenge to the commons at Grant being built. But I'm pleased to say that today, that association has nothing but good things to say about our four-year relationship in that community. In fact, I would suggest that the Columbus City Council, Waverly City Council, Ross County City Council, and others could clearly contest to our commitment to their communities. We desire to cooperate with the council on their vision for a park. We would welcome expanding the proposed acreage with support from the city on their adjacent land. We believe that through opportunities for intergenerational programming, employment opportunities, and regular meetings with the Neighborhood Association, both before and after construction, we can further personalize this project and make it unique to this wonderful community. On July 8, 2003, we finalized an agreement with the city of Waverly to establish a community park adjacent to Bristol Village. I wish we had a similar availability of land that we had in southern Ohio, that was 88 acres, so it's quite a bit different in point four. Nevertheless, the project has been a phenomenal success. Finally, we are willing and enthusiastic to meet the conditions set forth in the ordinance. I think that we've talked about 16, 18, whatever it is. And there hasn't been anything that you've asked for that we haven't agreed to, and I think that they're very reasonable requests. There are things, I think Paul would understand this, that there are things that you've asked for, we've said we do, but we understand why they're in writing, because even though we -- even though we have every intention of doing it, I'm not sure everybody always does. So we don't have a problem with that and understand why those conditions have been put in. In my experience, that is how you demonstrate in actual practice the art of being a good neighbor. I would be remiss if I didn't point to NCR's strong financial presence, which allows us to borrow money at lower rates than market and to provide charitable assistance where needed through our foundation, all supported by our 44-year track record. I wouldn't want to be dismissive about going out of business, but we have been around for 44 years, and I don't think that that's a, that's a big issue, but certainly don't have a problem with the penalty if we did, so. On a personal note, I have been impressed with the research and thoroughness of which this project has been reviewed. We realize, however, that the relationship is ongoing and will never end as we work to build a facility and its programs for years to come. During my 18 months of working with this project, I've grown to respect and admire the members of this council as well as the citizens of Athens. National Church Residences believes that competition is healthy, and the proposed facility presents some wonderful benefits to the city of Athens and its residents, young and old. We respectfully ask that you move forward on approval of the project. We are prepared to move forward likewise on the final design over the early spring in conjunction with our East Side neighbors, the Athens CCRC Committee and Ohio University. It would be our plan to work rather closely with all three parties over the next 90 to 120 days, because we would like to see this project break ground late summer. Any questions? Just kind of trying to touch on some things that have been brought up in the past. I know that it's really difficult to answer some of Nancy's, some of your concerns about the final documents, because from, from day one, we've had this kind of-
Headbutting?
-flooded of heads related to what's been common for you to have to approve a project, and what my boss and my architect tell me is customary in the other projects we do. And before I came to the first planning commission meeting, I remember after that meeting, driving home and hearing the conversation about what it was that you expected, or what they expected, and what was customary for us to do, and then as we moved months into it, it became the issue of, yes, we paid about $10,000 for the additional flood modeling, but the design documents, which is what our architect and, and my boss, Tom Slummer, have indicated is, is what you're really looking for, is about a $50,000 to $75,000 production. And the issue is, as Jim has talked, that all has to be done and more before the project breaks ground, but that it, it just wasn't, NCR never felt like it should be necessary that that be done, that expenditure of money, knowing that it may be a one-tenth of a chance that it would be approved. So I, I don't think we're ever going to resolve that issue, unfortunately, but-
In a week or so, we probably will.
That's true, a good point.
So, Jerry, before you leave, let me just, could you pull up that first graphic you showed?
Yes.
And it demonstrates my point exactly, with respect to the property.
Yes, it does.
It does, doesn't it? Need I say more? All right, so it's very, very, that building. Now, you guys can do, I hate saying even suggesting cul-de-sac, but you could do, arrange those buildings in a different way so it wasn't so intrusive on the bike path, I think. The access to the bike path. I mean, they're, I mean, you're talking about people that are going to be maybe slightly incompatible with the children running around, and I know everybody says, oh, we love children, but, you know, I've been around long enough to know that there might be someone someday who doesn't.
I will respectfully disagree only to the extent that the distance that it's away, I'm not sure you can turn that building and get access to four driveways and still fit it in. I mean, it's, it's, I don't know how many feet it is, it's not, it's not a long way, obviously.
Mm-hmm.
250 feet.
Two of my front yards, that's, okay. I just, I just-
It's interesting, because every, I think what happens sometimes is, it's not that something new comes up every time, it's just there's so much to discuss. I don't think I really understood until today that the proximity of the cottages to the bike path was a big issue. I think it was the proximity of everything to everything, but not specifically the bike path.
Well, that too.
Could, could that cottage be turned? It probably can be turned, get you 15, 20 more feet, but it's, it's never going to get you out of 100 feet.
It just seems to me that people who are living in those detached areas are going to have a higher level of ownership than living on a floor. You know, just thinking about my backyard and that kind of thing, and-
Well, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna be paying, you know, a similar cost structure, the likelihood is that they're all going to be couples as opposed to, you know, a 60 or 75 percent single. And again, part of the reason for building, I mean, you know, I've had the conversation, they, they don't add a tremendous amount to the financial, any, to the financial viability of the project, it has just been something that from day one, we really wanted to have more cottages than just four.
Right.
It turned out that four was all-
I remember.
-all we could get in.
Yeah. I guess I would like to add with that, that part of the negotiation that, that people were interested in there was not only the park, but also if everything on that side of the drainage structure were left with no fill, then some of the concerns about the possible impacts of increased flooding in the neighborhood would be mitigated, that that was really the larger concern that people were talking about when they said, what about not building the things that are east of that drainage structure, was looking not only at a possible park, but also at less fill overall on the site.
And Laurie Dunn, Stephen. Could we say the other one again?
Sure. And I think the comment was made earlier about what, what NCR would want the site. This represents what, what Mr. Swartzkov had talked to George Marotti about putting in the site. It can be left green, I think the issue was, was this was what he told us they'd be interested in, and that X, X was the cost that it would cost to do that, and that's how we came up with those pictures and that $35,000 number.
He must not have talked to the neighbors.
Again, that's part of the problem, is he'd have to be doing it in a real way.
Very interesting, though.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Can I ask you one question? Is, are you supposing that this land is also filled to get to what Debbie's saying, since it's going, how-
Actually, we really can't do that, I'm sorry, Christine. Thanks.
Talk to him later.
Bureau.
Muriel Graham, 24 Canterbury. I'm a little concerned about this whole process. It appears to me that it's been mistake on top of mistake. I see the, regarding the right-of-way, I see the first mistake as when it was discovered that there was not just a single owner of this property, but rather two, not just OU, but rather OU and the city, it seems to me that was the time for the developers to meet with both owners and figure out what kind of design plan they were going to use, not to say, well, we're sticking with our design plan, and we're, you're going to have to fit your ownership of the land into our design plan. Actually, that would have been the time if they, I know they weren't thinking about whether, no one probably would, whether this is acting in good faith or not, but that would have been the time to demonstrate really good faith. So I'm concerned that if you move ahead with this right-of-way thing, all you're doing is adding on to your original mistake, because as Nancy was pointing out, what is the city getting in return for giving over this right-of-way? Once that land is built on, the city doesn't have access to it. So I don't see where the city benefits at all from this, and I think you're making a mistake in moving ahead with the right-of-way when you're just compounding, as far as I see, compounding another mistake.
As a comment?
Good evening, council. My name is Linda Clark, I live in Albany. I was born and raised in Athens and been a lifetime resident of Athens County. I'm here in support of the reading of the ordinance tonight. I think everybody's acted in good faith, and that there's no reason to hold this up. We have a lot of people here that have been putting a lot of their faith in this construction. I respect the people on the side that want to make sure that it's done the best way, but I think that Ohio University and the council and NCR have really come together and tried to come up with the best plan that, that they have. And I'd just like to see that this ordinance be read tonight, and read the, the second night, and I'd like to ask, what, when would it be voted on?
It would be voted on sometime after the 19th, depending upon the decision of the Ethics Commission, which tells us how many people can vote and whether there are enough members of council to vote to make a decision. So we, we don't know at this point.
I don't understand the reason why it would not be read tonight, because it could go in conjunction with the other project. So to me, it's like stonewalling if you don't read it tonight. It's not voted on. Thank you.
Carol.
I have a question.
Please, Carol, please, come up.
You know how I hate to do that. I simply have a question. I, for example, when I read that Dale Tampe was accused of these linntras, whatever, I thought it was because he lived on Elwood. I was really surprised when I found out that, that it was because he was a university employee. Most of the people objecting to this seem to belong to the university, anyway, and I cannot for the life of me understand why they had to consult a lawyer about this. It seems to me just sort of a ridiculous situation, I'm just speaking my mind.
Thank you.
Such as it is.
Sir?
My name is Roland Swartson. I live at 50 Sunnyside Drive, and I walk on the section of bike path that's in question every morning, and sometimes I ride my bicycle down Morris Avenue and onto the bike path. My walk is in that same direction, and then I come back up underneath the bridge, back to the gas station to buy a newspaper. It's about a mile and a half, and most of it is there along the, the bike path. And I've been doing this for a number of years, and I, I don't understand the problem of proximity to the bike path as interference with my pleasure. I try to picture, how, how close would a building or anything have to be for me not to enjoy both the bike path for both of those reasons that they've been built for? I go underneath the overpass, and I have concrete then around me and over me, and that's in close proximity, and on either the bicycle or walking, it doesn't interfere. And this is, so this is an issue I don't understand, I don't worry about. The buildings have much greater need, it's something to get us across the swampy grass onto the gravel path to, to get over there. Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Swartson, I think the concern was more for the people living in cottages from you riding on the bike path, being rowdy and making noise.
Yes, that was selfish of thinking of, of me, yeah.
Other comments from the-
Transportation.
Yes.
My name is Greg Broadhurst, I live on the west side of town, 14 Groundville Avenue. I'll keep it pretty short and sweet. Council, as you may or may not know, though, depending on when you started on council, has been hearing me talk about floodplain management since about 1996. And one thing that the council needs to be concerned about in regards to the health, safety, and welfare of the community is the National Flood Insurance Program. If you haven't already got a booklet like this, I'll make sure that you get one. As recently as July 8th, 2004, there's communication from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, actually to the clerk of council, concerning no adverse impact floodplain management principles. Now, when I see developments go through like this in the, in the vicinity of the floodplain, I ask myself, aren't we putting the cart in front of the horse? Because the city does have, the council has the right and also the opportunity to exceed the standards which are originally set in the NFIP regulations. And what I would like to see is, before any more projects go forward, that the interests of the, of the population, especially in the impacted areas in regard to projects go, are taken a look at in relation to the NFIP regulations, National Flood Insurance Program. So I have done some public record research, and I will make copies for all council members, not, I don't have it this evening, but before the next meeting, so that you can look at the, the history of the communication between the ODNR, between the Code Enforcement Office, and between the university in regards to floodplain regulations, who's culpable in regards to insurance, the National Flood Insurance Program, and what standards need to be not only enforced, but enhanced in order to preserve and protect the, the well-being of the, of the citizenry. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I ask for more comments, I do need to point out that we have another committee meeting scheduled and a session of council at 7:30. So we're going to have to bring this to a close. We, if the committee decides to bring this forward for first reading, obviously, it will be on the agenda later in the evening, and we can, people who didn't have a chance to speak could chan, could speak again. So in order to allow the other committee to meet, as Chair of the Planning Development Committee, I, I reiterate my earlier statement that I would like to bring this forward for first reading tonight. Fine with me. Answer? No? Okay. So-
Predictably.
Excuse me?
May I comment? I know I wasn't here. I guess, I feel like with the, making any decision about the right-of-way should happen after there's a signed lease. There was a resolution authorizing the lease that was in existence for a year, and the lease was never signed. Certainly, if the ordinance around the planned unit development were to be approved, Ohio University could execute the lease with National Church Residences. They have excellent lawyers, and they can write it in such a way that if for some reason the revocable license didn't get approved, that the lease would not go into effect. I'm sure they can handle that. But I think because we have experience where there was, the trustees had authorized the lease, and yet a year, a year and a half elapsed without a lease actually being signed, I don't think we should make a decision regarding the city's property until there's actually a lease for OU's property.
And actually, the revocable license won't go into effect until the lease is, is signed. The language in, in this ordinance says so. Okay, so we'll bring it up for first reading later on the agenda, and that's all for this committee meeting.
So we go to Transportation Committee. I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Okay. I'll be discussing parking hang tags tonight. Carol and Ray Hazel and I have been meeting in a series of meetings to discuss issues with storage parking in neighborhoods, and the, specifically the 24-hour restriction on parking. And some of the goals of what we had been talking about is to make it so residents do not have to move their cars every 24 hours. People who have the neighborhoods currently have to move their car every day, and I don't think that kind of goes along with the whole goal of allowing for alternate transportation, riding bikes, walking to work, and leaving your car there. If you do go on vacation, you live in a neighborhood, you don't have off-street parking, your car can't remain there on the street. So that was one major goal, to kind of make changes to correct that. And then also to discourage the bringing of cars into the city by, by non-permanent residents or people who don't really need a car here and don't have a parking space. There's a lot of off-site parking that students or people who don't have off-street parking can pay for, but many- can pay for, but many are choosing to kind of take the free alternative route by parking their car in residential neighborhoods, and this is something we'd also like to eliminate. So, out of all of our discussions, we figured that this problem is, can't be solved with one simple ordinance. So, the piece we chose to break off and attempt to attack is the 24-hour restriction. And by giving residents with proof of residence a parking hang tag, this would allow a resident to leave their car on the street for more than 24 hours, not having, forcing them to move it. And so, what I'm presenting to you is sort of the options that we've discussed, and the current debate that I'd like all of your input on is, should it be one parking permit per property? Or, and keeping in mind that the hang tag does not guarantee a parking spot, it's sort of a hunting license for someone to park their car in the neighborhood, and it really doesn't change the situation that occurs now, except for the fact that residents wouldn't have to be moving the car every day. So, there's some of the listings I've given you. Should it be street-specific or sort of a neighborhood zone where you could park on any street in such zone, but the parking tag would be specific to the zone, and it would be enforced as other parking enforcement rules apply? So, Carol, do you have other things to add?
This was something that we discovered, that there are really two separate problems. And as Sarah says, we kind of chose to address the problem of having to go out and walk the car every night, because it constituted people just randomly moving. And repeatedly, when students were asked what they do with their cars when they live in the immediate neighborhood surrounding the university, where they park because of the 24-hour rule. And they said that they go out every day and hunt for a parking place anywhere in the neighborhoods, which didn't seem to me like the intended outcome of the 24-hour rule. We're not advocating that the 24-hour rule go away, but that perhaps we can partially mitigate this by having some hang tags. Question is, does it go to the landlord, or does it go to the resident? And do you limit it to one per resident? And the biggest problem is, Ray Hazel had put together an amazing list of how many residences there are with student or transient residents compared to the number of available parking spaces for those people, and it's staggering. There are many places where a street is short, say, 50 spaces. You know, that is not going to be immediately solved. But what we were looking at is, can we begin to address it, and perhaps in the future, work with it further? We wanted it discussed because it was an issue that came up frequently during campaigning, during the election time, and so we felt that regardless of what council feels about it, that it was time to discuss it again, and it was discussed approximately 10 years ago.
1995.
The ordinance language that I presented you is sort of adapted from the 1995. They were, we're kind of working towards a different goal, but I changed some of the things that were in there, and that's what's presented to you.
Yeah. The other question, of course, is that people object to a number of cars being stirred on their blocks during the day while students go to classes. This does not address that part of the problem, but also could be a topic of discussion.
Okay. I did, I forwarded the draft to some of the Anna members, but I didn't get any feedback. I did talk to some of the Westside Association members, realizing that it's not a hang tag that requires that if you're parked there without a hang tag, you're ticketed. I mean, unlike a permit for German Village or some other places where you just, you know, if you're there without a tag, you're in trouble. This really would give the ability of somebody to be able to park there longer than 24 hours, if I'm reading this correctly. The conversation I had at that point is that the people who have these tags would be able to park their car, and, you know, they have the option of driving or not for 24 hours. They don't have to, as you say, walk their car every 24 hours. The trend would be everybody who has to move their cars for 24 hours would eventually actually be displaced by cars that sit there longer. Therefore, the conversation I got to was, oh, talk about zones of streets. The push was towards streets rather than zones, which kind of surprised me, because I would go the other way personally. At the same time, they're saying, well, it's not, it can't mean you can't park on that street if you don't have a tag. It just means you're going to have to move your car. In terms of where, who to give the permit, I think the conversation I had was to the landlord. They're in charge of it.
That's what we thought.
And if they lose it, or the person loses it, they're the ones that have to chase it down, too. I'm not sure what, there was a price tag in there, which kind of threw me off. I'm not sure when you s-
For $5?
No, sale spots on a street.
Oh, right, right. If, that's, if somebody, oh, well, actually, we did talk about that, because there are many places where you buy a house, and then if you want a parking space in front of it, you buy it.
As if it were real estate.
So, we were just tossing out all possibilities. So, $50,000 parking spots, we liked that.
Okay. Probably too high of demand for those.
Might be.
Well, you know, $50,000 a year, is that it, or just forever?
Oh, no, no, they would buy it.
Okay. Part of the other problems, of course, would be enforcement, but we have somebody chalking the tires every 24 hours already. I remember Ray has given us zones that he covers already, so that it's actually in progress already. Part of the downside, which of course is the outcome of the 97, one parking space, one bedroom thing, is the backyards get filled up with cars. This may also end up having cars, backyards being paved over with gravel some more. I can see that being an outcome. I like what's going on. Hopefully, we'll get more feedback from the neighborhood associations at this point.
Sarah, Paul, how, how would it make that occur more often than now? I mean, by that, I mean the graveling over the backyard and so forth. If we already have people, you know, hunting for places, if we gave more of those people the opportunity to stay put, why would that increase the possibility?
We'd probably get more storage parking as a result, therefore, the shuffle would kind of stagnate, and therefore, people who need spaces, who have been haphazardly grabbing spaces, would have to start looking for other places. And they might actually buy, you know, remote parking, or maybe not. I could see-
That would be the more hoped outcome, that they would begin to say, okay, I'm not going to have a space this year in front of the house. I will have a remote parking space and rent somewhere.
Another thing, talking about the logistics of the hang tag, we'd be charging a fee each year. It would be renewed, you'd have to go in and pay for it, probably around, whatever, to recoup the cost of the hang tag thrown out there, $5 or so.
The computer, too.
And then, to, to receive the hang tag, you'd have to have proof of ownership, and it would be registered to your name.
Sarah, one other question, in terms of somebody who does have off-street parking, do they get a permit? Somebody has driveway, they get a permit anyway?
We had discussed only those without off-street parking.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. So, it's not ready to bring up and start running with yet?
No. I'd like to hear any further comments or?
Well, I think having it run with the property, as people have mentioned, probably makes the most sense if you're going to proceed with something like this. I think the cost is probably a little too modest. Where I've lived, I lived in a, in a twin-city sort of arrangement, Champaign and Urbana, and Urbana had such a tag system, and they charged a good deal more for that, and I imagine there's other examples of that as well. I guess, I think that, you know, the, the zone, I guess I'm, I think a zone, a zone approach probably might, makes a little more sense than a, than a street approach from an enforcement perspective, and it sort of has, mitigates some of the, this phenomenon that Paul's talking about. I mean, if you establish places where, you know, if it's only narrow, then you're, then you're really pushing everybody out. If you've created a larger area, then you might mitigate a little bit of that, what, lack of churning or whatever we're going to call it. It's kind of interesting, because I, this, this issue is the first, it's the first sort of memory I have of a civic issue in Athens. I mean, I hadn't lived here very long, and this is like the first one, first thing Sarah was thinking, gee, this is kind of interesting. So, it's kind of weird that here it is coming up now, so I guess things, what goes around comes around, I suppose. I think it's, I think it's something we have to talk about every so often, because the problem is certainly a serious one, and anyway.
Sarah, I think there are two things that I'd like to see. I think that any, any cartelage parking permit should include a section for street sweeping and snow emergency. And the second thing is, it should be revenue neutral, and that means you should probably think about where it's going to be housed and how those tags will be replaced, and maybe something like a scanner type of computer, so that if one is lost, quote-quote, and it's found and used, it could be-
Confiscated.
Confiscated, yes.
In the 95 language, the money went into the general fund.
It didn't pass though.
Yeah.
It's a mon for absolutely nothing.
There's a reason why.
Okay. Also, the map that you have has gaps in it. I noticed Elmwood and Maplewood are included, but not Sunnyside, and that would have a tendency to force cars to those locations. So, the map, if we go with zones, we're going to have to more.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this was just a, I quickly scribbled while we were taking notes during the meeting. There are other streets that you feel are problem streets and should be on there, and there are a lot more that were out in that, what, that study that Ray had with all the different tenants versus parking spaces.
Yeah, I have one of those.
More streets included in that.
You could use density of rental permits. Right, and that was kind of the general idea of what it would be.
Okay. I see Bill wants to wrap this up. I have one more miscellaneous, actually. In effort to make the comprehensive plan talks about a pedestrian-friendly city, I'd like to see the snow cleared off the sidewalk sometime in the near future, or maybe citations existing, one way or the other. There seemed to be a lot of it there. And is anything else from Miss Leans Transportation? Going, going, gone? Bill, it's yours.
It's mine. Call and order the special session for Athens City Council for Monday, December 12, 2005. It's on or about 7:30 PM. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Ordinance 12105, an ordinance amending, and these are for second reading, an ordinance amending ordinance 07504 authorizing reconstruction of Palmroy Road, Project Number 208. Also for second reading, ordinance 12405, an ordinance amending ordinance 011904 reallocating revenues from the city income tax and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 12505, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2006. Ordinance 12605, an ordinance authorizing staffing levels and non-union pay scale and slotting for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2006, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 12705, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce. Ordinance 12805, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to extend the current contract to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Convention and Visitors' Bureau.
Mr. President.
Member Patterson.
Mr. President, I move to amend 12805.
Second.
The amendment would be to mirror the language in the 127, which is the operation of the Chamber of Commerce, and to include the language, well, if I could find, no, that's not what I need. I need the actual.
126.
Well, yes, to include the language, where it says, including but not devoted to Ja- but that, it wouldn't say that. Do you have it there?
126, is that what you?
128. Sorry.
This one right here?
Yeah. Okay. That the mayor is authorized to enter into a contract to provide financial support for the operation of Athens County Convention and Visitors' Bureau for a period of three years through December 31, 2008. A said, a copy of said contract is attached here to and incorporated by reference. And then we will add that the duties will include, but not be limited to, the activities detailed in the authorized scope of service dated December 2005. So, it's in addition to-
And you're pulling this from 127? Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm adding it to 128.
But pulling from 127?
Right.
And I'm having trouble saying what you're pulling from 127.
Because it was an amendment.
Oh.
That's why you're having difficulty finding it, and that's why I was having a little difficulty fixing it. I did handle, hand to each council member a copy of Sally Dunker's Scope of Services for the Convention and Visitors' Bureau. Do you wish to have that entire thing read? No?
No, as long as we know exactly what we're pulling from and all council members understand.
The council did receive it in an email first. There was one correction made since that time, one bullet removed, and the updated copy was handed to council at the beginning of tonight's meeting.
And I would think that between now and the third reading, council would have plenty of time to review what you are proposing.
Right.
Is there further discussion on the amendment as stated only? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance 128 has been amended now and read for the first time. Ordinance 12905, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 2903 Rental Willing and Housing Permit. Ordinance 13005, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 27 Land Development, Chapter 27.01 General Revisions. Ordinance 13105, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 5 Public Utilities, Chapter 5.03 Water Regulations. Ordinance 13205, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Brad Jagaman, owner, 1517 and 19 Bayard Street, to allow parking on the city right-of-way. Now, ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 13305, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Ohio University to allow the development of a continuing care retirement community that will encroach on the city right-of-way. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this is the ordinance that we were discussing in, in committee regarding a revocable license, which would allow National Church Residences, who is the development of a retirement center proposed for the Stimson Avenue area, would allow them to actually utilize, probably build on our Morris Avenue right-of-way through there. I think we've recently talked about the issues regarding that, and actually, I have one update. As we were discussing-
Since we just talked.
As we were discussing, as we were discussing, I said, there's language in here that requires that this revocable license be filed along with the plat. Actually, that language was in the development ordinance, and when we decide- Actually, that language was in the development ordinance and when we decided to separate these two ordinances, it dropped out. It is now back in this ordinance that this revocable license would be filed with the recorder's office by the city in a company in company with the completed plat plan and building plan that we would also file. Therefore, in the recorder's office, any any change in the usage of this property would flag this change in in the revocable license would, as someone suggested, evaporate since it is tied by language to the effectiveness of the lease for this property. Any further comments from council members? Paul?
Still no Exhibit A.
I'm sorry. Actually, I'll have it for you here shortly. Other comments? Exhibit A was a copy of a drawing of the Morris Avenue right-of-way as it exists here. When I copied this, I left it off. Sure. Does the?
Is it from Leonard Swiers' web?
Yeah, I mean, we've all got it.
I've got my version of it.
Other comments? You're going to say something?
Mr. President, I'd like to move to table oh one thirty-three oh five.
Second.
The reason for the motion is that, first of all, I think it's highly unusual for council to discuss something in committee and then bring it up the same evening for a reading. I think that it has been council's general practice to avoid that.
It's even in our rules.
It's even in our rules. I think that it does a disservice to the community when there's a high degree of public interest, when our agenda goes out to the media on Friday to bring something up that hasn't really been covered in the media, you know, that it's going to be on our agenda in that way. I mean, it is announced, we follow the sunshine rules that, you know, it was going to be on tonight, but I still think that there's a lot of public interest in this and it is our normal practice and under our rules to have this come up on a different night than when we've just had the committee meeting. And secondly, for the reason that I stated during the committee meeting, that I believe that there the entity that we are discussing in this ordinance should have legal control of the land before we vote to give up the public's interest in this right-of-way. I think this is a whole different ballgame than the ordinance around approval of the P U D. We're actually giving up public property and I think that that shouldn't happen until the developer has legal control of the land.
We have a motion and a second to table ordinance one thirty-three oh five. Now, just for a point of quarter myself, if I'm understanding correctly, Jim, you're we're not going to say substituting by the one you passed out here that is different than the one that was sent out and is attached to council's agenda tonight, I am seeing the one you passed out under Section Three as a third point. Are there other? I'm having trouble understanding what other changes there are.
That's all.
That's it? Number three?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now, we've made no motion to amend by substitution. We are just saying that this is what you are introducing tonight, but this was not sent out to the public or tonight to.
It doesn't.
Okay, okay. Debbie, you also mentioned that council rules are in violation and I'm not sure that's correct. I'm we are reviewing council rules over here.
It would be the first time in my life that I look at it. Let me see. It doesn't matter because we could, you know, let's just both just have the book.
Okay. But it is, I know that council rules do speak on what is able to be added to a special session agenda. So we have a motion and a second to table ordinance one thirty-three oh five. Is there further discussion on tabling of the ordinance?
I I don't think we'll find it in council rules that we aren't allowed to do that. I this, I do believe that we have avoided it. I can remember times when we used to do this frequently and we we try not to do that. This is something that we've discussed and I I put it on the committee agenda so that we could discuss it before it was was brought up, but I do believe that was announced early in the week. So I don't think we need to table it at this time.
Further comments on tabling of the ordinance? Member Bain.
For the reasons that I mentioned earlier and then Jerry happened to just oblige me so nicely that I think that there are some unresolved issues surrounding this and I just wish instead of thinking about parallelism and other things that are sort of intellectual, we say from a practical point of view, will we get what we want? And my argument would be that we would be much better off separating the two, although we'd have to hear so many more versions of reality again and again and again. But, you know, that may be enough. I would rather have the so-called control of knowing that we would have some input because I don't think we have much input once we voted in. And that's why I am supporting tabling, although I didn't know it was coming.
Member Wile.
Just a question. It's related to tabling but not the inclusion of Exhibit A. Would that be an amendment for the downline?
Table A was not included in what was sent out either, was it?
No.
And it clearly says that it's there. I don't know that we need a ruling.
I'm sorry?
I don't know. We would probably need a ruling on that if it's.
Are you looking to?
I'm looking to.
The president to rule on that?
Right, the law director isn't here.
And the law director is the one that acts as council parliamentarian. I do not. So just so I understand what the objection is, what the ordinance that went out for everyone to be able to review and speak to and the media to have ahead of time did not include the table.
It referenced table A, but I see now that it wasn't there in the in what was sent out. I have I.
I do not see where the chair should make a ruling that that has any bearing whatsoever on tabling of the ordinance. I think they are different issues, Paul.
Okay.
So let's just.
Member Bain.
Let's just put it in perspective then. What we're saying is those people are voting to table are saying we would prefer to, even though we'll take much more intellectual punishment for it, we would prefer to wait until we have executed lease and until we have plans to know that our interests are preserved. I think that's what we're voting on here, just to put it in very, I mean, what we what I think, I know, and there are six other versions of interest, so I would not begin to speak for anybody else on council, but I just wanted you to know that's what I am voting for. I'm voting for to to say we'll consider it later. It's very important to me.
There are no other members of council that have trouble speaking for themselves either. Other comments on tabling of the ordinance? Member Kamke.
I would note, I just note that there are several conditions that were thoughtfully included in the in the ordinance that establishes the PUD and it's my it's my opinion that those many conditions are sufficient. And because they were thoughtfully done, they are sufficient to to address the the interests that have been expressed. And that's why I would suggest that we move these move this ordinance along. However, I'm fully fully aware of the of the pending limitations on my ability to do anything about this. Yeah, yeah. And I'll have a little more to say about that in a minute, but for right now, that's I let's just vote. I guess the other thing I would say is that if it if it falls on its own merits, then vote it down. That's what I mean, we're here to do business and this is an item of business and let's proceed with the item of business and we'll either vote it up or we'll vote it down for the reasons that people have said. And if it has, you know, if it doesn't have sufficient merit to pass, then it won't. And then, you know, the whole thing will go away or maybe it'll, you know, proceed into the next sort of generation of ordinances, but I'd prefer that we go ahead and move it along.
Other comments? All those in favor of tabling ordinance one thirty-three oh five, a show of hands.
Three.
Three.
Same three.
All those opposed? Motion falls, four three. And the ordinance has been read for the first time. Are there further comments on the ordinance?
Here it is.
Member Bain.
No committee meeting shall immediately proceed a regular, oh, it's a regular session without prior approval of the presiding officer. It's in there. But it's too late now.
Counsel, we voted on tabling. The ordinance has now been read for the first time. Council has had an opportunity to speak. Now it's the opportunity for citizens in the audience to speak. Mr. Broadhurst.
Greg Broadhurst, fourteen Grangle. It's interesting that these kind of controversial projects, PUDs or whatever, in the history of my observation, always seem to appear at this time of year and especially in times when things seem to be having to go like expedited, you know, rather than, I mean, it's not that we haven't had enough discussion or I wouldn't be here either, but, you know. I I don't I don't see it wise that that something of this nature should go forth without resolving other issues having to do with city property, if you know what I'm talking about. I don't need to bring it up here, of misappropriation of city property. And in relation to certain entities, and I'm talking around the edge here, certain entities who are interested in the this particular ordinance going forward. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Are there other members of the audience? Please come forward.
My name's Chris Paul and I'm thirty-five Monks Avenue. I'm I'm very much in line with Nancy's thoughts because at this point, as a member of the neighborhood that tried to negotiate with NCR through a community benefits agreement and got nowhere about this issue, I have a hard time sitting here saying, hearing NCR talk about they want to work with the community, they want to work with the neighbors, they want to work with this, but we brought up this community benefits agreement. That went no place and hence we have all the conditions on the PUD. The conditions wouldn't have been there if the community benefits agreement had gone through and this process probably wouldn't have been so painful. NCR has gone from having an acre to a third of an acre to, well, maybe we'll do it if it's passed by the end of the year. Now it's back to a third of an acre. But the problem is is that there's no final plans. There is no, there's some drawings, however, we don't know if the third of an acre is going to have a slope of fill in the middle of it because we don't know their final slope plans. They haven't provided that. Their elevations have not been provided. It makes a difference whether there's a slope of fill going through that third of an acre. There may be because of how the land is situated. We don't know. We don't know what the third, you know, we don't know if it's going to be a third. Maybe they'll do some more rigging with their final plans and it may be a quarter of an acre. We don't know. The fact is, is that we tried in good faith as neighbors to negotiate through this process, through a community benefits agreement. They said negotiate with the city. Now the city's going through it. Now they're saying, trust, trust us. But I don't necessarily see that because I want the city to protect the rights of the citizens, all the citizens who all own that property. That property is going to be converted into private use. And if the city doesn't get legally binding documents, then it is reneging on its responsibility to all citizens. Now, I know there's this letter of intent and but that doesn't really say much about the land. It says a thing about a grant to the city. So therefore, there is no legally binding agreement right now between the city and, you know, the developers and OU, least of all the neighbors who will be affected most by the availability of a third of an acre or a quarter of an acre or a third of a slope. And until, you know, if council passes this right-of-way ordinance without legally binding documents, they are going to turn around and something possibly could happen. You know, it's happened before and I know that Carol and Jim, when they were at the Campus Edge meeting with the Southside Association, has said, we were promised with University Commons or University Courtyard about having a nice buffer with trees. The developers promised us that. They didn't follow through. And that's happened over and over again in Athens. And I'm saying I it's you have to have legally binding documents before you go through with this because it could happen over and over again. And it seems that you guys have been bit once, you know, you should think about it and stop and and it doesn't do anybody any good to not have legally binding documents concerning how much land's going to be exchanged for this very, very valuable piece of property.
We're going to need to start imposing our three-minute rule. There's going to be a lot of people, obviously looks like they're going to be interested in speaking tonight, so I will ask that people try to restrict your comments to three minutes. John.
John, this one through two oh six Dutch Creek Road. Something that I did bring up at one point in front of the planning commission, but I've not heard anybody discuss it since, so I really want to air this issue in this public meeting, is that there are some serious deficiencies in the configuration of the bike path in this area. And not only does this project not constructively address those, in fact, it threatens to lock into place those deficiencies, particularly the problems of access to and from Stimson Avenue and other roadways in the adjacent neighborhood and the problem of crossing the ditch where the bike path really should be rerouted around the head of the ditch onto the old railroad grade. And I would like to see more, you know, this this set of issues be addressed more in this whole project because it is part and parcel of the fabric of how this project proceeds. Thank you.
Other comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name's Jack Ellis. I live on Mulligan Road. My wife and I have been in Athens for forty years, come this next April. Been up here before several times and spoken numerous times in support of the C C R C project on Stimson Avenue. I have a new suggestion to make to those who appear to speak this evening, especially to those who speak in favor of the project. And I ask that in addition to giving your name and address, state how many years that you've lived in Athens. Anyone else can also do the same. But I suggest this as a means to impress all the members of city council, the importance and the impact of years that performance of the NCR project brought to the life and the development and the improvement of our city of Athens. They, as citizens, have made important contributions to the quality of life here. For those of us who have lived here lived here over the past thirty, forty years or more, we have seen and supported many, many improvements in the subtleties, parks and recreation areas that were not present when we first arrived. And those are in addition to the years of taxes that we paid. This group of elderly citizens have paid their dues to the community, asking for little in return other than for all of our citizens to enjoy a quality. in return, other than for all of our citizens to enjoy a quality life, a fine quality of life. Now we're asking members of City Council to provide us with the opportunity to continue our lives in retirement here, with your approval of the NCR project and the ordinance. Before you proceed. I remind you and all present, such efforts to bring a retirement community to Athens has had a history of over 20 years. Without success. Primarily because of exceedingly high cost of development land within the city. And that prohibitive cost has now been resolved at the Land East of Ohio University. So I think it's time for all citizens of our community to recognize the importance of the fact that you, as City Council members, represent the entire city of Athens, not simply a limited area of constituents. This project is for the benefit of the full community of Athens, and it shouldn't be derailed by a group of citizens who have another agenda. Finally, in thinking of the responsibility being placed before you as members of City Council, I'm reminded of the John F. Kennedy Profile and Courage Award that is given each year. And I'd like to read just a brief statement concerning that award. And I quote, "It is presented annually to a public official or officials at the federal, state, or local levels, whose actions best demonstrate the qualities of political courage described in his book. And political courage has many meanings. As used by President Kennedy, the words refer to elected officials who, acting in accordance with their conscience, risk their careers by pursuing a larger vision of national, state, or local interest, in opposition to powerful pressures from their constituents." The need for this kind of political courage is especially important today. Too often, officials are captive of opinion polls, reluctant to act in the broader public interest by taking an unpopular course of action, or perhaps offending powerful groups. There's a need for men and women in our elected office who are willing to speak out and do what is right for their country and for their community. Ladies and gentlemen of City Council, I submit that your vote of approval for the ordinance for the project is not only important to the retired and soon-to-be-retired citizens of your community, it is the right thing to do for the city of Athens. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Other comments?
Thank you very much. I'm Jean Wells, and I live on Forest Street up on North Hill. Nancy is my councilperson. And I'd like her to hear. I have been in town for 50 years. And of 30 of those years, I've worked for housing, with Athens Metropolitan Housing. In fact, I got honored today with, with Joanne Prisley. We are now going to have a building named after us for our work with housing. So I'm also interested in housing for senior citizens, for Metropolitan Housing, and also pretty soon for myself. And having lived here for 50 years, I don't really want to live in place else. But neither do I want to be living in something that I don't feel is home-like and nice. And I've been in many homes that were run by the church group that is thinking about building here. My grandmother was in one in Florida. And my father was on the board of one in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I appreciate how they do it. And that's the kind of place I'd like to live. And I'd like to live in Athens. Please help me.
Thank you. Other comments? Come on.
I'm Diane McVeigh. My address is 83 Grosvenor Street. And I just want to say that I support the council moving ahead on this. There are a lot of valuable resources in Athens. And it is beautiful that we have green space. But I think the people that we have in Athens are our most valuable asset. And when you look around the room at people we have the opportunity to keep in Athens to not only serve on volunteer organizations, to spend their money here, to pay their taxes here, I think our most valuable resource are people, and we need to have housing here to keep these people here. Obviously, these people are very dedicated to having this project completed. And I think that we have had a lot of discussion. You have been very open to hearing a lot of different opinions. And I applaud you in moving ahead on the one ordinance tonight. And I hope you continue to move ahead, and we allow this project to go ahead. Thank you.
Margaret?
I'm Margaret Topping. I live at 178 Longview Heights Road. And we've been here 36 years. Raised five kids here. I just wanted to clear up a few things. Diane kind of said it all. I hesitated whether to come up, but I always would like to clarify things. And I too, you know, commend all of you for the work you've done, and the time you've spent on it. I think they've been very thorough. Anyway, I want to make clear that the OU does not inherit the buildings if something should happen. The buildings will belong to NCR, which is an entity that would continue to exist in some form, or be sold, it would never go to another, I mean, Jerry could clarify that better than I, but it would never go to OU. The, the land is the thing that OU would still have, I mean, if it was reverted. Also, the ordinance, or rather, there was some reference in the paper as to the developer having the contract with OU. That is not true. The developer has the contract we contracted with the developer. And again, it was, it's just the lease that we're talking about. It was our project, and we worked very hard on it. The other thing was that this community benefits agreement that Chris referred to, I'm sorry, neither Jerry nor I are aware of that. It must, she, you must have talked to someone else at NCR. I do think that this can be worked out maybe with this committee that is being talked about. And, you know, everything, if anybody's worked a lot with legal agreements, which at my age I have, you have to do some things on faith, and it's the quality of the people you're dealing with that counts. And truly, NCR is a fine organization of fine people. So I think you have to have some trust. And lastly, I just want to say again, too, let's see, I mean, this, this lease will be void if, if we don't, you know, if we don't get a recommendation that works from the State Ethics Committee. We've worked for nine months trying to clarify point after point that's been raised. Please see if we can't go ahead and vote anyway. And then we would wait with the Ethics Commission to rule on this. Because there's, there's really no risk involved at all. I mean, if, if they come back and say, nobody can vote because they all work for the university, and that's not enough people left, that's where we are. Because both of these things have got to go together, and we, and we, we need to get a vote. It's very important that we get this settled. Nine months is long enough since we went to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret. Other comments? Yes, Uriel.
It's just a matter of process again. I gather that that was another mistake tonight? Or was it not? Not tabling? I don't know. But there's something about the, the speed with which this thing must move through at the very last minute. Everyone's talking about the months of talking, yes, but obviously, there's a lot of stuff that hasn't been settled here, and suddenly, it all has to move through. And if you're talking about principle, what kind of principle is going on here that things keep going through with mistakes being made? You know, if it's clearly, everything's in order, then why are the mistakes being made?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I live at 14 North May Avenue. I've lived in Athens now for 43 years. And I'd like to echo Margaret's last comment, which was simply that nine months is enough. We live in a university community. And I suspect that almost everyone in this room is connected with the university in one way or another, to one degree or another. Now, of course, one of the characteristic things of university communities is that they're, they're vocal. Everyone has an opinion. Everyone likes to talk. It frequently takes a great deal of time to come to any kind of conclusion. As the chair for 13 years of a large university department, in trying to achieve something that went on and on and on and on, with new concerns constantly popping out of the woodwork, I was reminded by a former chair that the job was very much like herding cats, as he put it. In short, a university community is a very vocal affair. But it seems to me that if government is to be government, it has to operate within certain relatively short time spans, pierce to the essence of things, and come to some sort of decision. The question has been raised repeatedly, why is everything being pushed through at the end of the year? I think there's no one in the room who is ignorant of the reasons of why, after so many months, we are still discussing these matters. And my guess would be that if the present council does not choose to settle the matter, that a year from now, the cry may well be heard, well, why are we trying to hurry through approval of this development? It's possible for new matters to be raised endlessly. And eventually, one has to ask, are they being raised with the idea of perfecting a project? Or is the idea simply by endless iteration to defeat the project? Again, like others, I would ask the City Council to act on this matter in the remainder of the period of the present council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Doug Gossner. I live in the, on the near north side, 20 Farquhar Avenue. I was born in Athens. I've lived in this community for about 24 years. First, I'd like to point out that this is not going to be a continuing care retirement center. It's going to be a retirement center, but it will not have beds that would classify as a continuing care retirement center. One of those is actually going to be built on the other side of the river, on the west side, by the West, the West State Fields. And the way that this is being railroaded through is sloppy, and it does a disservice to the citizens of Athens. What's being presented here for a first reading is incomplete, and inadvertently, probably, but it's incomplete, and it has not been presented to the citizens here in, in our city. And furthermore, it's likely in violation of council rules to present it in the first place tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes.
My name's Doug Gatz, and I live on 106 Maplewood Drive. I haven't spoke here before, and hopefully you'll bear with me during these comments. And hopefully, they won't offend anybody, because I truly like seniors, as I think most of the people on both sides of the issue do. We all have parents who are older, grandparents who are younger. But, and somewhat motivated by the speech with the courage and the Kennedy thing, I thought, you know, I really should stand up and say what I think. So, so somebody's mentioned the fact that it's not going to be a CCRC. And I would just like to point out that, that puts us in an ironic situation, where the group who calls themselves the CCRC is actually supporting the development that will compete with the CCRC. Meaning, the chances of having a CCRC are a little bit less if you support this one, because it's economically challenging the other. The other point I'd like to make is that the people that are against the, or not against, but that are, are talking about the retirement center, are not because they're anti-senior. It's because they're very passionate about what they feel about. I've talked to a lot of these people, and Margaret can back me up on this, because we've spoken about it before, she may not remember. But not, not because she's older, because we talked on the phone, she's never talked about it face-to-face. But, but people have shed tears over this. Okay? People are shedding, have shed tears over the fact that they want the space. They're very passionate about it. I believe Margaret relayed to me that she had gone to a meeting with the Near East Side residents, and they were very upset. People were crying, people told me they lost sleep over it. Educators in the community have said it's bad for the kids. People feel very strongly about this, and they feel very passionate. And that's why we have this divisiveness. It's because there is probably 50% of the people, and it's represented here on council, it's a pretty even split of people for it and against it. People are truly, are passionate about that space, and people say it's not been used. I've been there where there's been two soccer games with kids, one with kids, one with adults, and ultimate frisbee game going on. Now, if you drive by the golf course this winter and say, nobody's using it, then do you say, well, let's build something on it, nobody's using the golf course? Okay? We understand what a golf course is about. In the same way, it's a flood plain. That's what a flood plain looks like. It's an empty space. It collects water when it floods. It's being used. That's what a flood plain is. So, and finally, I would like to comment on the fact that this is the, the ideal location, people call this ideal location for this retirement center. And I actually disagree with that. Although I live on the east side, and I do enjoy that space, I also noticed that there was a smell from the sewer that's there when the, when the evening is calm, especially at night. You can smell the sewer. It's not, I'm walk by there, or bike by there, or go to the, go to the pool, and you can definitely smell it, that's not a red herring. It's on a flood plain, it's close to a floodway. And I've actually asked members of City Council, I've heard from members of City Council, and I've also heard from, talked to people at NCR, and they've said, I would not build near that, I would not build my house there. Or I'd recently sold property that had less of a flood problem. So I would say, if you're going to vote with your courage, and what you feel inside you, think about what you would do. Would you build a house there? If the answer's no, then perhaps you should not vote for this. It's also a four-lane highway, but we all know that. So finally, the last thing I'd like to say is that I think, my suggestion would be that I, I think that we should all get behind the University of States project. I think that's much better for the city. It keeps everybody happy with the green space, the city gets green space, we get our CCRC, let's all push for that. If we're not going to do that, then I think we should encourage people that are pushing for it, and decide to get together and work out something that makes everybody happy. I think Margaret and I talked about this before. There could be a solution that makes people happy. One idea would be, if you think about the map, if you would get rid of the cottages, you're sort of splitting the space half and half. Half green space, half for the retirement center. And then if you go with no impact flooding, it'd seem like all the problems would be solved.
Thank you, sir. Are there other comments, new comments to be made? Yes. We seem to be on one side of the room, and then back to the other, please. Come on, Pat.
You did one.
Yes, I did. Yes, we did. We absolutely did.
Well, my name is Pat Light, and I no longer live in the city of Athens, but I did for many years. I think I came here in 1968. And I haven't done the math. But at any rate, I don't live in the city limits now. I live outside. And I have followed this issue since it started, and I have followed the course of other attempts to try to get housing for seniors, appropriate housing, I might say, for seniors. And I have a bunch of comments that I would like to make, but I have a question, because maybe I'm wrong about this. If the university were to build something on that land, would it have to go through this process? this process?
That could be debated.
Because to me, it seems as though if the university could unilaterally build on that property, and no one could have a say one way or the other about it, wouldn't it be much better, at this point, to take the bird that's in our hand, I'm talking to you people who live on the east side, rather than perhaps be confronted in the future by something the university might build there, which would not be nearly as neighborhood-friendly, I can assure you, as having a group of older people who love this town, love this community, have contributed to it in many ways. This is a, because to me, if that is possible, then it just, we have wasted a whole year when we should have said yes to this, to this project a long time ago. That I'm aware of right now, that the university is involved in, which is building on similar land, and no one here that I know of has been complaining about that. And I think the reason is because they know they can't, it doesn't make any difference, the university will be able to do what it wants to do. So there are other things that I could say, but I think I'll just leave it at that. I do want to say that I love Athens, and this is part of being in Athens, and I congratulate all of you who are on the council for being so diligently attentive to all the details that have been raised. And I want to say that I believe that whichever way this goes, there's a loss to the city of Athens. There's a loss of green space if it's taken by for a retirement center. There's a more significant loss, in my opinion, and that is of the rights, to the rights of the older people who have contributed so much to this community. You can say, go across the river. Well, when you lose your ability to drive, it's no fun to be across the river and not be able to get into town. Maybe if you're young, you don't see what a valuable place that is, and why seniors look upon it so favorably. But it's because it is in the heart of the city, people are not being pushed away and say, go across the river. So I would urge you to, let's stop fooling around, and let's get it done.
Thank you, Pat.
Kristy Trulie, 121 Morris Avenue. I'm concerned about the many unanswered questions that are surrounding this development. Most importantly, and actually it kind of piggybacks on Mrs. Light's comments, I'm really worried about the compensation, or lack of compensation, that the city will receive either in lieu of property taxes, or compensation for general city services that will be expended on the development, maybe not immediately, but that will have to be expended later. Mrs. Light talked about cars and driving and wanting to be close to town rather than far away. And I have been always particularly interested in traffic issues, living on Morris Avenue. Now that we have proposed a very large student development also on Stimson Avenue, I see Stimson Avenue becoming truly a mire of traffic problems. Already, it's not great, and I think it will become worse with 500-plus students in their cars, and anyone who is living in the retirement center if it's built. I believe that's going to call for traffic lights and other traffic control measures, sidewalks and other things. And I don't know where the money's going to come from for that. And I wonder if the city council will consider that before they vote to give up the right-of-way. Once the right-of-way is gone, there is, you know, without compensation back for it, that's it. And I really, really, really urge you, please, to think very seriously about that. It's very important not to give up public money.
Thank you. Those are all the comments. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Gene Amro, 187 North Congress. I'd like to bring up one issue that I haven't heard addressed, I guess in so many words. And that has to do with the fact that we are, as people have pointed out, we're a community of people, we're trying to do the best we can to preserve the community for all the people, and deal with individual needs at the same time. My concern, I guess, one of my concerns here is that, yes, it's true that the university's donation of the land, if the city council turns over the right-of-way, that it does reduce the cost somewhat compared to what University of States might be charging for equivalent housing. I don't know what those numbers are, and I'd like to see even ballpark numbers along that line. I'm not sure what this difference is. It might be significant, it might not be, in the end. At the same time, I see this as the city and the university subsidizing a certain segment of the population. And I think that's appropriate to decide to do that, as a government. Governments need to decide to do that when it's appropriate. But I also question then, who's getting subsidized? And I'm concerned that this kind of a, and I do believe people deserve the right to have this kind of facility available to them, and I think University of States will do that. I'm also concerned about the larger number of retirees in Athens who will not be able to afford either alternative. Who are we subsidizing here? Really subsidizing, by Athens standards, an elite. And I feel like an elite, but by Athens standards, many of the people who will be able to afford this kind of housing are, I wouldn't be able to afford this kind of housing, I know that, okay? And I know a lot of other people that wouldn't be able to afford, if we wanted it. We're providing, not unlike along, again, the coastline and the Gulf of Mexico, along Louisiana, people were able to build along the coastline, people that have the means to do so. When the flood comes, the government bails them out, they rebuild the infrastructure, and they can build back on their land again. It's subsidizing an elite. I'd just like to see some, I would urge people who want this project to find a way to perhaps set aside a certain number of units for people of low and moderate income, if they're really serious about getting subsidized by Athens and by the university in their plans for retirement center. I lived in Boulder, Colorado, this was a feature of this city when I was living there, that if somebody wanted to put in an apartment complex, they had to give so many units over to low and moderate income people, people on welfare. So it would be nice to see, again, another gesture of goodwill perhaps, would be to see something, yes, we're going to reach out to a segment of the community that really can't afford to otherwise live in this kind of a situation.
Sir, we need you to wrap it up.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
I'm getting complaints from council. Thank you. Any other comments, new items, Dale?
I'd just like to say something, if I could. I wasn't here on last Monday, and probably, in retrospect, I'm glad that I wasn't. You hear a lot of stuff when you come to council. You hear much of it thoughtful, some of it kind of rhetorically excessive, but that's okay. That sort of comes with the territory. But when you attack someone's integrity, when you suggest that because of their employer, that they're going to make one decision or another decision, when you suggest that someone is not going to just weigh the issues and evaluate them on their merits, then you sort of cross a line. I'm really disappointed in those who have raised the issue of conflict of interest. I have never, in eight years, ever been influenced by my employer on a vote, ever. If it were to ever happen, if it were to ever happen, I would quit, because I owe it to the people, the city of Athens, to resolve the issues on their own merits. It was a thoughtless, baseless, ignorant accusation. And now, other members of council are gathered up in it, and that makes it even more despicable. To boot, it was cowardly, because I wasn't even here. Now, we can argue and fuss over the merits of a project, and we ought to, and it ought to be robust, but don't impugn the integrity of people because they may or may not have a different opinion. That's wrong. And that's a line that we don't cross very often around here. One of the things I like about living in Athens is because people passionately believe things, and they fervently express themselves, and they're very eloquent. But to sort of cross that line is really disappointing. I'm sorry it happened. I hope that we can decide this matter on its merits. Now, that may not happen. It's in the realm of the Ethics Commission, and actually, someone suggested to me that the ethical thing to do would be to sort of not participate in this. And I guess what I would say is that the ethical thing to do is to make the hard vote. The easy thing to do would be to say, geez, I got a conflict, I'm not going to be involved in this. That's the easy thing to do. That's the cop-out thing to do. So my message is shame on you, if you've brought that allegation. Shame on you. You're better than that. You've been better than that all the way through here, and it's a shame that it's come to this. Now, the Ethics Commission will rule, I'll abide by the ruling, of course, because that's what ethical people do. But I know what a conflict is, and I know in my heart that I don't have one. Now, that's all I got, that's the only thing I'm going to say about this. Thank you for listening to that. It wasn't on point, but I appreciate the pointed privilege, Mr. President.
Other comments?
My name is Lisa Bowlin. My husband and I have lived in Athens for 12 years. Even though I teach death and dying at OU, I still get nervous when I talk in front of a crowd, especially people that are somewhat controversial. I just wish all of us could come together. I do want to thank council so much. I don't know how you all even sit up here without all needing, you know, catheters. I don't know how you sit here so long without having used a restroom. That's having worked in a nursing home for a long time. I have a really difficult time with these meetings, especially as I'm aging. And I have aged so much since I've been on this committee. I have been blessed to work with Margaret Topping for three and a half years. Again, my husband and I have lived here for 12 years. My husband grew up in Athens, so he was here from about 1958 until 1978, when he went off to college. And I've just been really blessed to be on this committee with Margaret. I want to just real quick touch on the point of the CCRC, and how we sort of came up with our name. I just wanted to let you know that when we first started out, you know, there was Margaret Topping, a financial advisor, who called me a gerontologist. We had a lawyer, a physician, we had a dean of Health and Human Services, because we're so hoping that students will be able to use our facility in the future, a nurse, a physical therapist. And we all got together, not really knowing a whole lot about continuing care retirement communities. And we were very much hoping that we would, in the end, be a continuing care retirement community. All of us were not aware that Ohio had a moratorium on nursing home beds at that time. We've all become very knowledgeable over the years, and I mean years. And we have been so blessed also to have NCR stand by us for a very long time. My husband calls them the guy that always wants you to go to the dance with them, and you just kind of always put them on hold, and then finally you said, we really, you know, let's go to the dance. And they have been there behind us, they are a wonderful group of very, I would say, Christian-minded people who are kind and caring, and I just think we're very, very lucky to have them. And lastly, I think the big thing between the CCRC project and the retirement across the river is that our project is a not-for-profit project, very different than a for-profit project that's going to be built across the river. Very different, I think, as far as the philosophy that our project would have versus that. And also, the individuals that have been interested, 600 individuals that we have on our mailing list that have been interested in our project, are those that want to remain in town, for the same reason that you all want to remain in town. You know, for the same reason that maybe you don't want to live in the plains, or maybe, you know, you don't want to live out in Albany or somewhere else. They want to live in town, because so many of them have lived here their lives. And so, thank you very much for your time, and I'm sure we all need a restroom break.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next ordinance, I would like to just take a moment to also make a comment, along with what Member Tankey has just said. A number of years ago, there were two council members and a former president that was asked to step outside of this chambers by the law director to be told that we had a conflict of interest. It was during a time that we were discussing Streetscape, and at that point, another member of the community had challenged Howard Stevens' vote on the issue before us. And anyone that would have known, or does know Howard Stevens, would agree with me that he is one of the finest individuals I've ever had the pleasure of knowing. And to say that Howard Stevens would have voted for Streetscape because of the money that was being spent on some lighting fixtures, that AEP, who he happened to work for, was going to, would influence his vote, was insulting. And also, the law director informed former president of council, Guy Phillips, that he had a conflict because he had several pieces of property on Court Street that was going to either be, have to pay some money or not for being part of Streetscape. And by extension, it appeared that I also had a conflict of interest, because I owned a piece of real estate in conjunction with other people that Guy Phillips was an owner of. I own very, very few rental pieces of real estate, and the criteria I had was, they had to be within earshot of where I lived, or I wasn't interested in owning them. But beyond that, as may, the three of us were informed that we had a conflict, and could not be voting on the one issue that was before us at that time for those reasons. All of us found it fairly surprising. But then I also was told that having a conflict is not a bad thing. In a small town, there are always going to be times that issues will come before council, that because you have interest, you will have a conflict. It's not a mean thing. It's not a bad thing. Because you have interest, you will occasionally have a conflict of interest. So I would, and the issue of, does somebody that worked at Ohio University have a conflict on all the myriad of things that could come before this council? That's something several members of this council have discussed for years, but it's never been brought forth publicly. Now, I guess that this is a time that several members of the community did decide to bring it forth and challenge. I don't know where it's going to end up. But I would just say to our good friend, Member Tankey, that I don't know that anyone means it as a challenge of your integrity or your moral fiber. It's just a thing. So I guess I would throw that out, and give you an opportunity to retort it if you wish. Having more than digested everything said before us tonight, let's move on to ordinance 13405, and ordinance amending ordinance 0, I'm sorry? Okay. 13405, an ordinance amending ordinance 0, I'm sorry, okay, 06604, to increase sewer rates in accordance with the Athens City Code and declaring an emergency. Member Bain.
Could we wait five minutes or two minutes?
We'll take a couple of minutes while those that are not interested in our sewer rate increase.
And sewer rates can leave.
To leave the city, or building.
Leave the city.
Leave the city, yeah. If you could try to do it as expeditiously as possible, we still have other items we need to attend to tonight.
this one did not make it on. This is the first of what may be several increases. This one is to allow some longer-term planning in the vicinity of May Avenue Cable Lane and some other things to happen, as well as the ongoing considerable expenses with respect to Columbus Road and FEMA. And there's an example of a place where we moved it after the flood, which is probably a good thing. But anyway, having said that, we're going to increase the base rate and the gallonage. And so, you can see the 3% shown, it's not very much, but it does end up tallying up over time. Notice that we have 1,000 gallons stepped, and as you get to the larger, the monthly rate charge is considerably more. This is a little late in starting, I apologize for my blunder, but there it is, 113405.
Further comments? Ordinance 13505, an ordinance amending the 2, I'm sorry, Member Patterson.
I just had a question. I thought that at one point we talked a little bit about putting in a permanent 3% on a regular basis.
I'll leave that for the next head of this committee.
Leave it for next council.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what, Member Sands?
What's an average homeowner gallonage?
I don't know, I think it's...
Several thousand, I mean...
Yeah, I think it's probably...
Five thousand?
Well, assume that the sewer rates are going to be 25% more than the water rates, and so if you are a big water user, you have a lot of teenagers taking showers, washing their hair, it's going to be, just one, one will do it. Or if you're a person, you're going to have a higher rate than, let's say, mine is usually in the vicinity of, oh, so let's say 10 and 12, 10 and 13. And so, this will be a minor change and it probably will go on from there.
Other comments? Ordinance 13505, an ordinance amending the 2,005 appropriation ordinance, Member Tamkey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance in section one, we are allocating $65,000. This is the lakefront grant, this is an agency fund, which means we're receiving the money and then allocating the money, and this $65,000 is, let's see, paid out of this year's funds, but not reimbursed through the grant until late in January, so the idea is that we encumber the money now, so we can pay some invoices, and then we'll get some more funds. This is the transit system that comes in.
By the O R S, yeah.
Other comments?
It's very important, public service, I think, for students and other people.
That's true. Yes.
R1105, a resolution requesting the mayor to investigate the terms and conditions of the land transfer and funding sources for Stroud's Run. This is shown as introduced by all members of council who wishes to speak to it. I believe, Member Sands.
Mr. President, this resolution comes after council has received a report from the Stroud's Run Task Force, who spent quite a bit of time investigating the possibility that the city of Athens might take the state of Ohio up on its offer to transfer Stroud's Run, as we understand it, to city ownership and for the city to operate. A couple wheresses are important. The first whereas says the state of Ohio, whereas the state of Ohio has expressed an interest in transferring the ownership and operation of Stroud's Run State Park to the city of Athens. And whereas the city of Athens and the Ohio Department of Natural Resources are interested in a partnership to manage Stroud's Run State Park, and then talks about several groups who use it. Therefore, be it resolved, the Athens City Council does further, desires further information regarding financing such a venture, and does hereby request the mayor to investigate the terms and conditions of the land transfer and funding sources in order to provide final contractual details. Section three, this resolution does not approve any expenditure of funds. This is a one-reading resolution, as I understand.
So I guess I would be looking for a motion to adopt.
And therefore, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
I meant to say that.
And I should have asked a long time ago, but...
We were on a roll.
All in good time, I guess. Further comments on Resolution 1105?
Fall. I'm glad you mentioned section three, thank you.
Yes.
Member Bain.
I would like to thank Mr. Sands for doing such a fine job of getting our...
Wheresses in order?
No, I was thinking more of the sections in order, I appreciate that. I came in fully expecting that I wasn't going to vote for it, but now I can.
Other comments? We can come together on occasion, can't we? Other comments? All those in favor of, I'm sorry, Member Wile.
I don't think I have any conflict of interest on this.
Oh, let us think.
Let's not start.
All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 1105?
Aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition. The resolution has been adopted, we've addressed all items on our agenda tonight, we stand adjourned.